Thank you and welcome, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for March 27th, 2017. We'll begin with the signing of the warrant.
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have the approval of the March 13th, 2017, meeting.
Motion made, second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have invitation to speak. Is anyone here that would like to speak who's not on the agenda? Not seeing anyone, we'll move to the next item. Oh, I'm sorry, please, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Gary Sandborn, I'm a resident from Walden Woods. And I'm here with my wife Marty, just to voice our support for the Route 85 crossing.
Okay.
We have used, we cross that 85 often to get to the bike trail either walking or on our bikes. It's a very giddy road and having a crossing there would be a tremendous safety asset.
Yes.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have public hearings and scheduled appointments. First item on the agenda is Skewley Corporation doing business as Skewley's Pizza Bar. Transfer of common vitular license, all alcoholic license, alcohol license and common vitular and entertainment license.
Mr. Chairman, before you start, I'm going to recuse myself from this due to a conflict in interest.
Okay.
So, I'll be back after the sign is over.
All right, we'll give you the signal. So, the information the board has been provided, I'll go through what we have here and then you can add to that. But first, let me have you introduce yourself for the benefit of the minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Well, my name is Suzette Ferrera, I'm here from Consiglio and Brocato. I'm here tonight representing Traff Corporation. With me tonight is Fran Trafficanti, who is the president and treasurer of the corporation. We're here tonight on our application to have the alcohol and entertainment license transferred from the existing Skewleys. My client Fran is a lifelong Milford resident. His two boys, one is currently a senior, the other one graduated from Milford High, and he's actually the existing JV basketball coach. So Fran has, you know, existing ties to Milford. He is currently looking to purchase the business. He's looking to pretty much keep the restaurant bar pretty much the same. He is going to change the name to Banners and try to make it more of a sports-themed bar. He's going to make some changes. He's looking at putting in a wall to separate the bar area from the tables to make it more of a restaurant, try to make it a little bit more family-friendly. He's looking to bring in more, playing sports more, bringing in more TVs. He's looking to keep the menu pretty much the same, keeping some of the Skewley staples, including the pizza, the chicken parm, things of that nature. He is going to bring in some more pub-type food. He's also going to increase the children's venue to again, try to, you know, increase the family orientation of that type of restaurant. With respect to the back room, right now, his plans are to keep it more as a function type of room, to, you know, have reunions, holiday parties, talking to local businesses and trying to do some lunch and dinner meetings, things of that nature, having some holiday parties and perhaps doing maybe some karaoke or comedy shows, things of that nature. With Fran's experience, he currently works for the New England Sports Center in Marlboro. Now, obviously, that main business is the ice rink, but there is a restaurant and seafood shack that actually brings in almost nine hundred, hundred thousand to a million dollars in revenue every year. And Fran has lots of experience in the financial background of that. He's also, prior to that, had worked for many years at the Worcester Beechwood Hotel that has a five-star restaurant in that as well. He is also looking to bring in a full-time manager that has a lot of experience in the everyday, day-to-day operations. And I think together, they bring a lot of experience to this restaurant-type business. So tonight, we're just here. Fran is hoping to extend, expand the business and make it successful for the town of Milford and we're hoping that you're going to support his application tonight.
Well, you brought with you very able counsel.
Thank you.
Because that's probably one of the better presentations I've seen in understanding what you intend to do and where you intend to take the business. I think you've taken a lot of, any questions that I know I would have, but I do, as a matter of process for what we're doing here this evening, I do want to share. We would typically, as we would typically do, we go out to department heads and look for information and we seek that information and I'll tell you what's come back. From the building commissioner, this is zoned and allowable use. Obviously, it's a continuation of existing use, so there are no challenges there. From the town planner, again, no change in actual use. We go to tax collector treasurer, no outstanding taxes or liens. We go to the police chief and fire chief, who research people who are going to have liquor licenses and obviously no concerns or issues. So with that, I'll go to, not having any questions, I'll go to my colleague.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I think, thank you Suzette for that presentation because you, my typical questions were already answered, I guess, to put it simply. So, I don't know, I can certainly just go ahead and make the motion so we can get them what they need to do. I'll make a motion to transfer the existing license, the common vitular license, from Skewley Corporation to Traff Corporation doing DBA banners.
Okay. I'll also vote in favor of that, that's unanimous.
My second motion is to transfer the existing live entertainment license from Skewley's Corporation to Traff Corporation doing business as banners.
I'll vote in favor, that's unanimous. And there's a third liquor license that's transferring with this, Rick?
You have the common vitular, all alcohol.
Takes care of all of them.
Yeah, and.
Those two motions, okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't separate. Okay.
I can just wish them luck and can't wait to see the changes.
Lots of luck.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to visiting there and eating there.
Thank you, always be welcome.
Thank you very much.
Nice job, very nice job. And we're not, we're running three minutes late, so we're doing great. Next, we have on the agenda Transportation Advisory Committee and the chairman of that committee, Scott Christofouli is here. We'll just wait a second for, we'll just wait a second for Brian to be seated.
She's really not allowed to come up here, is she?
There's no room up here. Somebody's going to pay for that later.
Yes.
Okay, Brian's back and we'll go over Transportation Advisory for the benefit of the public who's watching on TV. We'll let you introduce yourselves. We obviously know you.
Hi, I'm Scott Christofouli, the chairman of the advisory committee.
Brian Long, the vice chair of the committee.
Brian, good to see you again.
So, you have the packages, obviously, right? If you want, we could start out by, with a new schedule, because that's kind of important for everybody here. All right, so there've been numerous changes in the last couple of months. Couple stops have been eliminated, others have been added. One of the bigger stops you'll see that was eliminated, there was a Highland Street stop, it's not on this list no more, has been changed to the Reliant Medical Center across the street from.
Courthouse.
Courthouse, right. That was a big stop, but I think the Reliant is also going to be a big stop. We don't have a lot of numbers on that yet, but the other major change is the Milford Library has been added as of last Monday.
Outstanding.
Yes, that was, that was a huge step. I highlighted the first two times on that for a reason being is they can't stop there that time in the morning, it's backing us up 15 minutes. The library actually doesn't open until nine o'clock, so I made the suggestion that they possibly could stop at the Memorial Hall and rather than, you know, go through all the traffic on Spruce Street. But I don't, I'm not sure if they've done that yet, but, so, that's why that's highlighted. But the other stops are all, I guess it's working already in the afternoon, we haven't heard. So, besides that, you know, you guys obviously know, but it's now staying within the town, we're not going to Hollison on that Route 14 anymore, so that cut a lot of time off, which allowed us to do the library.
And that connection is being made where again?
That is now at St. John's Chapel, Corey Square, yeah. Corey Square.
Good, good, perfect.
So, moving forward, we are distributing this as we speak, as much as we can. Problem is, we put one out one week and it changes, we've got to put another one out, so it's been really hard to really keep everybody informed of the changes and, but we're doing the best we can. All right, so, let's go with the final numbers for each month, start from the beginning, Route 14. Obviously, August, we had three days running, 65 passengers, didn't seem like a lot, but you can see the progression, progression over time. December having a thousand and four. January, it came down a little bit. February, I think due to the weather, a couple snowstorms, the bus was canceled one day, so it fell back a little.
Three days short as well.
Right, and it's a shorter month also. As of March 17th, though, 824 riders.
Wow.
So we're looking to break a thousand, obviously, in March. Great numbers, so, what the 5,785 riders total so far. Daily ridership, I have this on here, I mean, you can just breeze through it real quick. Quick note, the very last two dates, it says March 16th, March 17th, that's March 22nd, March 23rd.
Okay.
It was a misprint. But if you want to see day-to-day what's happening, this, this next chart, this is the people boarding the bus. This came from the MWR TA. It's good information because it tells us, you know, pretty much who's boarding where and.
Sure.
Where the most people are getting on.
You know, Scott, just a real quick thought, as I look through this, again, I don't want to look, look at it as pure spreadsheet analysis, because the first thing that comes to mind if somebody were just doing that and cost per route or cost per stop, is that you would say, the 23 people who are attending or getting on the bus at Milford High School would be less significant, maybe we wanted to move that. But for 23 families and 23 kids getting from there to their jobs or their home, that's a tremendous service for young people, so that's why I, I'm not, I think the data and the information you're providing is incredible. This is very, very helpful and we know how hard you push to get accurate and complete information from the MWR TA.
Well, going on the boarding, I'll just, you know, point out a few things. At Birmingham Court, 764 riders getting on at Birmingham Court, that's a huge number. That's a lot of people being serviced by that bus. And as you go down, you'll see some aren't so, you know, plot a drive, we don't have a lot. Milford High School was low, I think, the problem we were having is the bus was stopping there too soon.
Too soon.
And the kids get out of school at 2:20, the bus isn't waiting if there's nobody there, so they're missing the bus. So we changed the times, we delayed them there 10 minutes.
Okay, good.
2:30 they leave now, so.
Smart move.
And I think the driver of the bus will get, get the idea when the kids are done coming out, he'll figure it out. So we're hoping that number goes up. We've had not so much complaints, but comments from the Milford Youth Center saying that the kids are missing the bus and they, you know, they can't get out there fast enough, Mission Springs is no longer a stop, but Milford Town Hall, very interesting. 914 riders, that's, that's the biggest stop basically in town, Milford Town Hall.
Centrally located and.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. You know, and some of those people might be going to the library, we don't know, you know? So that, that may change that, we'll see. We have no numbers for the library at this point, it's too soon. Reliant Medical, that is going to be moving, I guess, but that's not going to happen till the fall from what I'm understanding. And we still haven't got a definite whether or not the bus is going to make that change and they'll look into what they can do time-wise. I'm not thinking there'd be a problem, but they want to look at it first.
Yeah, 455 have gone to the Milford Senior Center, I know Sue's here, big proponent.
One thing I want to say, Kevin's here, I'm going to explain Kevin's here. The Mendon Senior Bus is coming to town. Have you actually started that, Kevin?
April 21st.
And they're going to bring their seniors to town, drop off at, I think we decided to use, I mean, the senior center now. And they're going to hop on our bus and use our bus to go around town. It's going to greatly add to the ridership on certain days. So we're looking forward to that, if it all pans out correctly. So other towns are starting to use our service also, which is a benefit to us, benefit to all the businesses, obviously.
Sure, sure.
So we look forward to that and I don't know what else we should point out here. Any questions on it?
Yeah, why don't we do that, what, because you've provided a great deal of data. Brian, would you like to add anything?
Not, not in regards to the data, I think that all kind of speaks for itself, but we've, we've been very pleased with the increase of the ridership over the course and I think the numbers have been pretty high, so we're, we're definitely pleased with that and looking to see how the spring and then getting into the summer affects the ridership as well, so.
To me, these numbers are staggering, it's actually much more than I would have expected at this point in the, the bus's life cycle, if you will.
Watching it increase is, it keeps increasing, it's just, where's it going to stop? So the next page we have is the people getting off the bus, the all lights. So Birmingham Court, again, 602, it's right up there. The highest would be in Highland Street and West Street, which is now Reliant, so hopefully that stays the same, because there is a stop right at Shaw's, so, you know, I'm pretty sure most of those people are going to the courthouse on to Reliant.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll go to the board members, see if they have any questions or comments. Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott, Brian, thank you very much for this information. I think your committee's doing a great job in terms of monitoring the situation and, and also providing information to this board, which can then go on to other boards to make decisions, to hopefully continue this as a service. But I want to just tell you a couple of things, you know, and I think the chairman alluded to this kind of a thing, you know, throwing out the numbers, you know, we, we had Jen Walsh here a few meetings ago and she talked about how important this service is to the students that she serves. I had opportunity to go to the Crossroads Clubhouse in Hope Dale, they service a number of individuals throughout the community. This is an important lifeblood to, to those individuals, to get them out to jobs, to medical appointments, even going to the, to the store or something like that. You go there, you know, they've got the route posted up on the board, they've got the times, they've got, it, it's become an integral part of their lifestyle, the programs that they run. And, you know, that's happening more and more in the community and I guess it's evidenced by the numbers as you're seeing increased usage, but it's just a tremendous service and it's growing all the time and it's very good to see service to that segment of the population that considers this kind of a transportation so vital. And, you know, we talked about this a little bit and, and it might be off the trail a little, but, you know, in terms of expansion, I know that, you know, it's an issue for folks going out of town for medical visits and I don't know how we're going to accommodate that, but I think you're at the position now where you look to try to target some of these other needs that, that have been identified. But it's nice to see this become a way of life in the town of Milford. To me, it's a long time coming.
Thank you, Brian. Will?
Yeah, no, I don't have any questions, I appreciate all this information. It was actually very easy to get through and, you know, certainly easy to comprehend, especially with these numbers jumping off the page, especially when it was just, it just seems like such a short time ago, we were worried about getting 10 or 12 people on the bus and now.
Some interesting stuff we figured out, though, is like, the AM riders are way higher than the afternoon. That interested me, I thought it would be the opposite.
Yeah.
You know, a few things we definitely figured out that were not expected.
No, this is, this is great and again, I think of a town of our size with all the, with all the, whether it's businesses and our hospital, this is, this is something that we need to keep providing to the community, especially, especially as the numbers are increasing like this and I think this is such a good time for you to come and along with Brian and Michelle to, to give an update.
I think, you know, just one, the other thing I want to add is, you know, Sue is always quick to remind us, as an advocate for the seniors, that we have an aging population and that those numbers are only going to grow. And unfortunately, for some of our seniors, and we're, if we're lucky, we're all going to get there, they lose the independence of being able to drive, but are more than capable of participating and all you have to do is spend a day or an hour in the senior center to see how the seniors enjoy that facility and are benefiting by the services that are being provided with transportation in the community. Brian mentioned Jennifer Walsh and the special needs children. I don't know that everybody understands it, but state and federal funding stops at, I think, 21 or 22, I'm not sure, 22. And, you know, throughout, throughout their young lives, we're always trying to, and I know Jen specifically and the organization and the people that work with her and the staff at the school system are always trying to promote independent living. If, if not for programs like this, and she advocated strongly at the FinCom about how important this is, you know, it's clear to me that, you know, if, 30 years ago, 40 years ago, those students, once they left the school system, were homebound, they never went anywhere after that. Now we, you can go to Shaw's, you can go to, you know, anywhere and see people with disabilities working in very productive lives, thanks to some of these programs. So, thank you for participating on their behalf, you're not going to always hear from them, but thank you for participating on their behalf and on behalf of the seniors who are not here tonight. I look forward to bringing this information to the FinCom. Can we just make sure that we get a packet to the FinCom and then, I'm sure it's going to be coming up, was it going to be scheduling a meeting? Have they talked with you yet?
Not yet, no.
I'm happy to sit with you when that happens so that we get a chance to advocate together. If there's not anything further, thank you for bringing this information.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Again, it's pretty startling to me.
Yes, we're all pleased.
Yeah, very, very much.
It's good news.
It is, it's great news.
It's good news.
Oh, Scott, you're staying, thank you, you are staying. We're going to jump to old business, Main Street Crosswalk, while Scott's here so that he doesn't have to wait around. So Scott, I'll let you introduce the topic and discussion.
Okay, I was asked about a crosswalk at the top of South Bow to basically Draper Park, where there is no one, there's no crosswalk in that area. And I've had some consultants look at it, we want to do this correctly, we want this all to code and we want it safe. Me and the police chief have been out there a few times, watching traffic, you know, trying to figure out what we should do and sat there with a consultant. So what we came up with is it's, you really can't put a crosswalk from South Bow to Draper Park. If you do, it's going to be at an angle, it's going to be a very long crosswalk and the site issues with cars parking there. So we decided to look at Franklin Street to Draper Park. Now that would be on the north side of Franklin, opposite the police station. She'd be across the street from the police station on Franklin to Draper Park. So we had a consultant look at it and just design it for us, basically. We haven't done it yet, but I have a quote to have it done. It will be similar to the other crosswalks, the bump out, you know, for handicap, visibility, wheelchairs and stuff like that, and then you'll have, the distance will be short enough in another bump out on the other side. Everything seems to fit there better than it would fit at the top of South Bow Street. The other thing we came up with is the parking space at the top of South Bow Street on the left-hand side has to be eliminated. That's definitely a site problem right there.
Yeah, it is.
And the chief totally agrees with that. So we have been in touch with Cindy Casey and explained to her about the situation and we have a new crosswalk to go and everything seems to be all right. So, like I said, I have a, I have a consultant's report and an estimate for them to do their work and then I get to come up with an estimate for our work to put it, to install it, which we won't do in-house, but we'll have a contractor do it. Just a matter of going forward on it. So, I mean, I expect it to be anywhere from maybe 12 to $16,000 install.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Brian?
Yeah, no, obviously I would support this, so targeting this town meeting for those funds or is this a fall project?
I'd like to see it done before, you know, our construction season starts, so as soon as possible. I mean, town meeting would be fine. You know, it just, funding's tough for me right now, I mean, we could do it, but I have other projects I've got to do in the spring, so.
And, so, so Scott, run that by me, so Franklin Street is, it's on the police station side or?
It's on the bank side.
On the bank side, okay.
So it's the north side of Franklin.
Okay, okay. That's the spot.
It actually fits perfectly.
That's the spot that makes the most sense.
Absolutely.
And that's where you see a lot of the foot traffic and I'm as guilty as anybody, you know, I'll run across there to go over the post office and that's, that's the spot, you know.
And we're definitely giving people a spot, you know, another spot to cross, so they don't have to run through the traffic, obviously.
Yeah.
Because the day I went out there looking, I would cut through the traffic too, we're doing the same thing, so.
Yeah.
Because there is no way to cross unless you walk down the street, so it makes sense. Plus, we have that other intersection boxed out and that would kind of affect that situation there also, we don't want to really get into that, so.
And then you're talking about taking the parking space from South Bow Street?
Right at the corner of South Bow and Main.
Okay.
Right when you get to the top, if you look to the left right there, there's like, always a truck.
Can't see.
You cannot see.
Okay.
Very bad situation there. So if we put the crosswalk there, we're going to have to eliminate that spot anyways, so now that we're moving it down, we don't have to eliminate anything down there, so we'll eliminate that one, just for the visibility. Should work all right.
Yeah. Okay. Makes sense.
Yeah. No, I, I don't have any questions, I just want to comment on that space because, you know, giving up a, a parking space on Main Street isn't a great idea in general, but that's a really bad intersection. I've, I've experienced that a few times myself and seen other people pull out, just like you said, if there's a truck there, you're just, you're stuck, you're out in the middle of the street by the time you can see by it, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Will. So, when do you, so, how do we fund this? Is there, have there been discussions about how we fund it?
There's not talked about that.
Do you have, within your operational budget?
I do, but, I mean, yes, it could be.
Could you, could you tolerate either replenishment in October for the line item?
Yeah, we can make.
Is that something that would work for you?
Yes.
Because you know how your operation budget goes, you know the bulk in the summer, so I just don't want to leave you, because the other option is, and I'm going to propose this, and I'm going to ask that we talk with the FinCom about this, we, we have $100,000 that's set aside for FinCom discretion, for emergency items. You're proposing a solution for what is in my mind paramount safety concern, and it's not a theoretical safety issue, it's a demonstrated safety issue. I'm, I'm not a traffic expert and I'm not a safety expert, but there was a loss of life at that intersection. I've since gone, gone back and looked at it as well. I don't see why this wouldn't fit into that, I don't know, do you have any thoughts about getting this done, getting this done as quick as possible and utilizing some of those funds? I'll go to you, Brian, any, to me, that's what it was designed for.
Well, my, my first thought would be to add it to the, to the spring town warrant, where we haven't signed the warrant yet.
Okay.
Secondly, I think your concept is probably the better one, to draw it out of your operating funds and then put an article in the fall to, to replenish that account.
That will delay me till July, though, that's the only difference.
Yeah.
I would like to get it done ASAP, honestly.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement with you.
I'm going to be, you know, straight out pretty soon, it's going to be hard to get contractors in there.
I mean, the only other thing, if you wanted to go to the reserve fund, I'd just ask the, the finance director to take a look at that and see how that's going to interplay with any audits or other requirements that might be, you know, from the state. I don't know if that would comply with the terms of that particular account.
You know, I, I'm just concerned that we've waited, we've waited this long, I don't want to wait an additional day. Scott says that when the weather breaks, he's able to get somebody in there and get this done. You know, I don't want to be talking about, and I know you don't, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I don't think any of us want to be talking about a second incident. And if, if we can do that and do our best and make it one day earlier because of logistics of town meeting, I'm all for that. So, so Rick, if you could, I'll also be making some calls tomorrow, but if you could make some calls about funding this to the emergency FinCom.
Yes, I'll check with Zach also.
16 of $100,000 in this area, I don't think we have to go far to demonstrate it's a safety concern.
I think we've used some of it, but I know there's much more than 16 available.
Good, good. Yeah, I'd be a strong advocate of that, hopefully we can get there.
I mean, I can go forward with my budget, like I said, but at the end of the year, when I run out of money, you know, I got, it's tight, so I'm right there. But I can, going forward for now, I can, but I just make sure that we have an option of replacing that, in case I need to.
Okay.
It's most important, you know?
Well, we'll let, let them decide. Well, we'll let, let them decide and let, along with dialogue from you. If it's something that's needed upfront, that, I don't want anything to hold you till July, as I guess.
I'd rather not do that.
Okay, so if this, if these funds, if these funds can be available tomorrow and you can get started next week, I'm all the happier for it. Okay, good. Why don't we look at that?
Okay.
And fall back the July, but I don't, I really don't want to go to July. And I don't think they will either. They're reasonable people.
No, no, that's-
They know it's a safety issue. Everybody's tried to cross there.
We're almost a year out, so we should get it done.
We've waited long enough. Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much for presenting that. And thank you, you know, the chief is probably watching, and if he's not, we'd like to thank him for his participation in looking at this from a public safety perspective.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just while Scott's here, Mr. and Mrs. Sandborn are in the audience. They were here to talk or they wanted to hear and they voiced their support for the Route eighty-five crosswalk. Is there, where are we with that?
I'm not sure. I've only seen one email on it. I'm not sure who's, if it's Mike Dean, that's-
Is that where it is right now?
Yeah, Mike is filing petition. Reno's here, I think.
Reno's here for the topic.
I think he's going to speak to it tonight.
Oh, okay, great. Awesome. All right.
Good, good. Thank you, Scott.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Scott, take care.
Good luck, Ryan.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Next, we have town administrator report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just three items tonight. One, Sue Clark is pleased to report that the senior center has received a CHINA six grant in the amount of three thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars for equipment for the wellness center. And I'm informed she will use these funds to purchase a new treadmill for the center. I also want to advise the board that Mass DOT has started a safety audit on Route sixteen and one oh nine at three locations, East Main Street at Beaver Street, East Main Street at the two driveways leading to the Quarry Square Plaza, and East Main Street at Medway Road. A meeting and a site walk was held on March twenty-first. It included officials and engineers, traffic engineers from Mass DOT, as well as the fire chief, police lieutenant, town engineer, highway surveyor, and myself. We met here before to organize the site walk. We then went on the site walk and we then came back here in room three and basically the professionals brainstormed thoughts and ideas on how to make these areas safer. The next step in the process is they'll prepare a report for us. We will then proceed from there. Again, Mike Dean is going to be working, town engineer, on this project with them. So, I will continue to report to the board on that. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, I've been informed by the police chief, and I believe each of you have also, and Amy Leoni, that the, they have received a steering committee grant from CHINA six to approve the funding request for the police department and the juvenile advocacy groups, regional substance navigation program. And the amount of this grant is fifty-two thousand dollars. So, as we well know, the significant problem, and this is very, very good news for the town. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions or comments for Rick?
Uh, no, I, I don't have any questions.
Nor do I, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations to Amy Leoni and Police Chief Tom O'Laughlin for advocating on behalf of all the families who suffer from the opioid addiction problem as part of a nationwide problem, but we certainly see our fair share. Two people very concerned and on the front lines of this, so we thank them. Okay, next, we have town administrator, town annual warrant.
Mr. Chairman, the warrant is there before you. I believe there are forty-four articles presented to you. There's also a grid sheet listing most of the articles, which are sponsored through the Board of Selectment, but various other articles. Some of the funding amounts obviously have not been finalized, so, and a number of the articles aren't, aren't funding required, so. I'd ask the board to approve the warrant, sign the warrant, and then obviously I will be putting the warrant articles on the agenda for the next several meetings for the board to then begin considering those articles.
As the, as the numbers and costs get finalized, okay?
Exactly.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the warrant as submitted.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you, Rick. Next, we have town meter, town administrator evaluation. So first, I want to begin the town administrator evaluation process, letting folks know how this process went, some of the feedback, not only about process, but about the town administrator. I want to begin with saying, Rick, you did excellent. You did an excellent job this year, as evidenced by the evaluation you received with the combined input from the three of us. I have some additional detail to provide. And we can go over that process and see how we might improve the process for evaluation next year. Some of it is just simply formatting and some of the process, because this was the first year. You know, I want to say, having started this process early, having discussed evaluation, objective evaluation, goal setting, you know, I feel better having combined the inputs of the three selectmen with this process. I found it easier, less subjective, and I think we can even make it even better. But I don't want to take away from the message that we need to deliver this evening. Your comments all ranged from meeting expectation to outstanding in every category. And I want, I want to pick a few from this so that it highlights, I think, some of the things that I, I saw thematically throughout the evaluation. Your influence in town hall and setting the culture, set the tone through your hard work and attention to detail was noticed by all, all the board members. The time that you put into your work and your craft was, is also noted. Follow-through execution. Organ- organizational skills. Communication skills were outstanding. And in the communication skills, it, it was even higher rating in that exceeds expectation and goes to outstanding. The way you deal with the public and your communication skills, you're not always on the top of everybody's hit parade when there's an issue or challenge, but you deal with them constructively, professionally, respectfully. And I've not once actually ever received a complaint. They may not be happy with the result, but I've not heard one complaint of how, and only positive comments about how you were always respectful to the public and the folks in your office, Jeanne and Liz. And that's a reflection on you. There's also a note here on your key role in making sure that computed, the community compact with the state was, was finalized. That was something we set out as part of our, the beginning of the year. You made sure that grant was submitted on time and was complete. And as a result, we received a grant that saved the taxpayers some significant money, so that's also noted. The work that you've done in delegating, I know that, that may have come harder from us, from the standpoint of your past work experience. There were very positive comments in terms of your ability to delegate and your demonstrated efforts to delegate. There was a concern, and I'll share with you my concern, that if you didn't delegate, I was afraid that you weren't going to survive with your night meetings and everything else that you have to do. You did that very well and I look forward to seeing that because I think your staff is there for you and I think the staff is ready to take on the additional workload.
I agree.
And you've done a good job. And it specifically noted your delegation to IT and finance, letting that run and giving it the guidance and steering it needed when it needed it, but still delegating that activity. Strong, again, meets requirements all the way to outstanding from initiative. And, uh, let me just, something I bypassed that I don't want to miss. It is on the last page. Because there's a great deal in this evaluation that discusses your personal traits. All of the comments reflected in some way, shape, or form, your high standards of integrity and fairness and ethics. You create a positive workplace and, again, a strong sense of ethics and judgment and a willingness to take responsibility. And even shield your employees if it's not your responsibility, but you understand, you, you, you don't take the credit. You're quick to share the credit. That's reflected in here as well. But also taking responsibility for the outcome of something within the building. So, overall, I would say this is an excellent evaluation. I'm glad we went through it. To me, it demonstrates to the broader public that not only can private sector do evaluations, public sector can do evaluations. There's some comments here because nobody walks on water and if we're objective about that. Personally, I would love to have this evaluation this year. I'd be very proud to own this document and say I did these things. So, I hope you are as well. And there's some additional guidance going forward for next year that's not intended to be critical, but more constructive on how we might expand on some of the success you've had this year. And I hope you take that in the, the vein it was meant and the, the delivery. I don't know, is there, I'll go to you, Brian. Is there anything you'd like to, to reflect on or comment?
Yeah, no, I, I think the town administrator does an excellent job. My personal evaluation reflected that. I think all of the various aspects that come into play, he, he just does a great job in the areas that you, that you mentioned, so. You know, Town of Milford is, is very fortunate to have him as the town administrator.
Agreed.
We're lucky to have him.
Will?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, Rick, I just want to tell you that I'm very impressed. And again, when you read my personal evaluation, you'll see the categories that are most important to me because no matter what our job is, it's also very customer-centric. And to walk into this building and know that someone who's having a problem or having a question is going to be treated with respect and knowing that that problem is important to them, regardless of whether we deal with more important issues before that person or after, that goes a long way with me. So, in the two years that I've been on the board, I have not yet received a complaint that you or the office were not respectful to people regardless of, of attention level that may have, that may have been presented to you when, and to, and to Jeanne and Liz when someone's coming up to that window and you don't know if they're just coming to say good morning or if they have weight in the world on their shoulders. So, customer service goes a long way with me and I appreciate that. So, job well done.
Thank you.
So, Rick, on behalf of the board, thank you for your work this year. Thank you for the work that you always do. Thank you for setting the culture for the building and continuing to work on customer satisfaction is a key point. And your strong sense of ethics and judgment.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate the assistance of the board. I thank each one of you. Dealt with you all, learned something from everybody, and hopefully we'll continue that.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Is there any other old business that the members have? Brian?
I, I don't have anything, no.
Will?
No. Thank you.
Okay, under new business, we have Green Leaf Garden Club, the annual plant sale at Louisa Lake Park on May twentieth, twenty seventeen. They like to hold it from eight AM to twelve PM. Is there a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll move to approve.
Seconded.
That's unanimous.
On the Milford Day. Celebrate Milford Day.
So, hopefully, folks, we can celebrate Milford and buy some plants.
That's right.
Uh, next, we have a request from the Milford Lion, Milford Lions Club for a toll road. The police chief has reviewed and found it to be safe. And the information is that Milford's Lion Club would like to hold the toll road in Milford on May thirteenth, twenty seventeen, with a rain date of May twentieth, twenty seventeen, from nine P, nine AM to two PM. And it's at the intersection of Route sixteen and one oh nine. I, I always wince when I say that, but I know that they know what they're doing and they've been given the right guidance from the police chief. I always worry, these people who volunteer and do nothing more than try to help people, I just always worry somebody's going to get hurt, but I know that they're following the chief's guidance. So, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if anyone can handle themselves at that intersection, it's the Lions guys.
Yeah, that's true.
So, you know, I, I think they'll be fine. I'll be glad to move to approve.
Seconded.
Uh, that's unanimous. Next, we have Inspector of Animals, the reappointment. Is there a motion or nomination for the Inspector of Animals? Brian?
I'll, I'll move to appoint Rochelle Thompson.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. She does great work. God bless her. Okay. Next, we have Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee, Walden Woods to Bike Trail, Route eighty-five crossing. Reno, you want to come up? We have your memo in front of us. It was dated March ninth. And we've obviously been in communication over this topic.
First of all, Mr. and Mrs. Sandborn from Walden Woods are here also. As you recall, the town meeting granted, was able to acquire an easement for a vacant lot across eighty-five from Walden Woods. So, now that's behind us and now we're looking to make the crossing safe. So, one of the first things we, we should do is to provide a minimum striping across Route eighty-five, some signage, and we're also looking at a flashing overhead light. But in order for us to do anything on Route eighty-five, you got to petition Mass Highway for permission to do that. So, the town engineer's been working on the application for that petition, but we need the Town of Milford to be the applicant, namely the Board of Selectment. So, the request tonight is have the Board of Selectment be the applicant for that petition. We don't know what they're going to ask for.
Right.
But we have to start the ball rolling.
Okay. And Mike Dean's working with District Three on that?
He's preparing the paperwork now.
All right.
So, it depends on what they approve, is we'll come back and see what we can do under existing budgets or we may need some small appropriation or some private funds. I should mention, too, that all of the costs so far in this endeavor has been from private funds.
Yes.
So, the town has not contributed financially to this, but they've been very supportive in helping us get the easement. One other thing that's coming up, now that we have the easement, and this easement allows access from the trail to about three hundred acres of town-owned land and one hundred eighty-five acres of which are under conservation restriction around Walden Woods. It also allows access from the one hundred sixty-five unit Walden Woods development to the trail. So, it, it's sort of a double-barrel effect we get with this, with these easements. So, we're, we're very pleased to see that this is moving along. The next thing that's going to happen is the Charles River runs through this lot. And we're looking to provide a safe crossing over the Charles River. I mean, it's no wider than this.
Right.
This desk right now, but right now there's a couple of planks and we have to somehow improve that. So, we're going to have to petition the Conservation Commission, provide a notice of intent. You're going to also be the applicant for that petition also. So, I'll just give you some heads up. There's something else coming down the line for us to complete this whole project. That's where we are.
Well, on behalf of the community, there wouldn't be a walking trail. I just want to thank you unless, you know, it wouldn't be a walking trail unless you were leading this effort for all of the years that you have. So, I, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your continued involvement and the expansion of this and improving the safety. That's what this is about. I know I'm happy to, to go forward as the applicant on behalf of the, the friends of the trail and the users of the trail, but I'll go to my peers.
Thank you. I'll be very glad to make the motion, have the Town of Milford as the designated applicant.
All right.
The easement was a long time coming.
Over a year and a half it took to get the property owner to agree to something, but he finally did.
Thank you. Thank you again, Reno, on behalf of the community.
Okay.
And that's unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.
I had a Jean's one. I had a Jean for me. Next, from the Town Administrator, we have Geriatric Authority Refund Debt Service?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. About a month or so ago, I asked Chris Pill, the treasurer, to look in to see if we could do something with the existing geriatric authority debt. The original loan was a 40-year loan. We are now 10 years into it, so we are able to, in essence, refinance. Chris talked with our financial advisors. They put together a debt service schedule. What it will do is reduce the term of the loan to 28 years from the 30 that are remaining. It'll reduce the interest rate from 4.2% to 3.8%, which will result in the savings to the town and the geriatric authority of approximately $1.4 million over the course of the loan. We did discuss this at one of our geriatric authority meetings, and obviously, to us, it seemed that this was a very wise course of action. I want to thank Chris and Zach for putting this together. So we would be asking the board tonight to vote to approve the refinancing, and I have listed in my summary a very specific motion that is required for the sale and issuance of the refunding bonds. But it just will benefit the geriatric authority greatly in our day-to-day budget.
So Rick, just to recap, we currently owe $7 million, and we have 30 years left. The new loan would be for a shorter term.
Correct.
And the savings of $1.4 million.
Correct. The interest rate itself is also reduced.
Outstanding. I think this is the delegation we were just referring to a minute ago. You have the idea, but delegate to the folks that know how to spin the numbers. Thank you very much for bringing this up. It's great savings for the taxpayer and a great savings for the geriatric authority. Brian?
Yeah, these are the kinds of decisions that really, you know, put Milford in the financial position that it is in. I remember in the past, you know, Bob Rozier came forward with these kinds of strategies, and anytime you can chop off interest, you're doing yourselves a big, big benefit. So I'm obviously 100% in favor of this.
Yeah, we didn't stretch out the term. We shortened the term and created savings here. So outstanding work. Will?
I'm in total agreement. Support it.
Okay. So why don't we go to the very specific motion that is required to be made? Do you have that?
So I would move in accordance with the language written in F5 under the Town Administrator's summary to support the proposal to refinance this debt.
Seconded.
And also vote in favor. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Next, we have proposed zoning bylaw amendments from the Planning Board. Larry Duncan's provided a note explaining that at their regular meeting on 3/21, the Planning Board voted to forward the following zoning bylaw amendment proposals to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion in the upcoming annual town meeting warrant. Let's see. And that's amend section related to residential animals and amend another section related to solar energy systems in town property and/or town buildings. Is there a motion?
I would move, Mr. Chairman, to refer both of these to the Planning Board for public hearing.
Seconded.
Also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Next, we have a memo from Sue Clark. And somebody's made a very generous donation of $250 to the Senior Center, and her request is that we accept this... I'm sorry. Received a donation from Laurelwood Condominium Association, the amount of $250. And she's asking that we accept this gift.
I'll move to approve. Seconded.
Also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Is there any other new business that the members would like to bring up?
I don't have any new business, Mr. Chairman.
New business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Rick, if I could just pass on another address to you.
Sure.
There's been a lot of activity at 32 West Street, and I've gotten phone calls from a few of the neighbors.
Sure.
I've also received some comments on that property. Thank you for bringing that up, Will. If that's it for new business, we'll go to correspondence. Is there any item of correspondence the members would like to bring up this evening? Brian?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Nor do I. Thank you.
I don't either. So with that, it's the intention of the board to go into executive session for the purposes of meeting with town council regarding the water company and any potential purchase. Town Administrator to discuss contract with town treasurer. And lastly, executive session to discuss with town council, police, and collective bargaining. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to go into executive session for those purposes.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Now I'll go roll call. Brian?
Aye.
Aye.
Will? And I also vote in favor. That's unanimous. We will not be returning to open session, and thank you and good evening.